Welcome everyone, the city council tonight. The mayor's gone, so I'll be filling in for him and council member Colin Erickson is also gone. He's going to be zooming in though. Is he on yet?
Yeah, the one time I tried to eventually got him, but I could hear, but I couldn't participate.
We'll go ahead with trying to get him. We'd like to welcome the Madison County Commissioners with us tonight. Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Parkinson. We're going to be holding a joint public hearing on fees tonight, so I'd like to welcome them here. Start our meeting by having a prayer by Councilmember Eric Erickson and then a pledge by Councilmember Dave Reeser.
Our heavenly father, we are grateful to be gathered here this evening to discuss the affairs of the great city of Rexburg. We are thankful for the blessings that allow us to gather and to meet and for the freedoms that we enjoy and for those who lead, guide and and direct our great country, our state, our county and our city. We pray for each of them, that they may be guided in the decisions that they make, that our lives may be improved and that we will be provided the means to be able to live well and to raise our families in safety. We're thankful for the opportunity again to meet this evening. Pray that thy spirit will be with us. As we are met, that we may be able to deliberate the items on the agenda in a civil manner that we'll be able to come to conclusions which will be for the best and benefit of the city and county. We again invite thy spirit to be with us as we discuss these matters and we do so humbly in the name of thy son Jesus Christ, amen.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mariana, can we have a roll call of the council members?
Here.
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 Here. Okay, we have a call.
Mike, I'm here. I just can't hear who's saying the names.
Okay, perfect, welcome. We now have a time on our agenda for, we'd like to welcome some new employees. Brandon Butikofa from the street sanitation driver. Brandon here? Like come up front and just come up right here. Yeah, come over there if you could. And just tell us about yourself and your family and where you come from and about yourself.
My name's Brandon Butikofa. I just started street sanitation. I'm on my second week. I appreciate the opportunity. I've been, I'm a native Idahoan, lived in Rigby, moved up here four years ago. I'm divorced. I got two boys. I thank you for the opportunity.
Welcome. And Kenny Wheeler's from the water department.
Yep, I'm Kenny Wheeler. That's my wife, Taya Wheeler. We've been married for about a year. We've lived in Rexburg for about a year. I started at the water department about two and a half weeks ago and I've loved it. I'm from Parma, Idaho, so I'm not too far. My wife is from Portland, Oregon area and it's been a good job so far. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thanks.
Welcome, both of you. Good luck. Now on our agenda, we have a time for public comment. This is public comment for things that are not on the agenda, items that are not on the agenda. If I wish to public comment, could you please keep your comments to about three minutes? Is there anyone who would like to? Anybody online? Okay, move to our line number five, public hearing. This is for the fiscal year 2025 budget amendment designated as ordinance number thirteen thirty-five. If motion passes and considered first read. Turn the time over to Scott. Matt's not here tonight, so.
Yeah, bring that up. Yeah, just that. Just up. Yeah, bring that up if you want. So I think we've seen this before, but just to make sure it's right there in front of you right now. You guys hear me okay? So the total change to the budget is $2,138,700. We have and these are things that have been discussed throughout the year. As was mentioned last time, these are things that you're familiar with. But if you guys have any questions before we go into the hearing, certainly like to be able to answer those, so.
The question is, I think it's pretty well discussed inside me. Any questions? Okay, then we'll go right into our public hearing. In the public hearing, we have three opportunities to comment. We have those first who are in favor of the ordinance and then we have those who are neutral and then last we'll have those who are against it. So we open this public hearing. Is there anyone here who is in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there any in the neutral? Seeing none, is there any opposed to it? Negative. Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing. Now I can entertain a motion to accept the fiscal year budget adjustment, budget amendment for year 2025.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number thirteen thirty-five and consider it first read.
Do we have a motion on the motion to accept the budget adjustment? Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Johnson. Any to comment? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
It passes. Then we'll have our second public hearing. We'll have a joint public hearing with the county commissioners. And this is on the amendment and the adoption of the new rates for the city of Rexburg fees and also for those fees that include the county, which is the golf course. Is that it? It's the golf course. So Scott, you're up again.
All right, okay. Well, again, I think these are for the most part fees that you guys have seen several times at this point, but we do, we did make some changes to the golf fees in the way that we did bump up some of those minds blank, excuse me. The green fees and but also our offerings, discounts to our citizens of Madison County, so. The parking fees are going through a pretty sizable increase to try and keep up with costs of what it takes for being able to provide those services and and then with Rexburg Rapids, kind of the same thing that again where we're bumping up fees but offering a discount to our citizens to be able to use those facilities, so. If you guys have any specific questions, I would love to answer those now.
I know that Matt asked the golf ward chair to come and explain all that.
Turn the time over to you.
Yeah, if you have questions about the golf fee changes, I'm happy to answer them. Can I just give like a minute or two overview of what the proposed changes have in them? Mostly modest increases. There are a couple of the fees that went up by twenty or twenty-five percent. We've seen a lot of play come in from outside the county and so what we've decided to do is, or to recommend to you is to increase the rates by about twenty percent and then offer a twenty percent discount for Madison County residents. And so residents wouldn't see the fees change very much. It would be people from say Idaho Falls or Jefferson County that would see the rates go up. That's one of the big changes we've seen over the last couple of years is a lot more play from
Three opportunities to comment. We have those first who are who are in favor. Of the ordinance. And then we have those who are neutral, and then last we'll have those who are against it. So we open this public hearing. Is there anyone here who is in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there any in the neutral? Saying none, is there any opposed to it, the negative? Saying none, we'll close this public hearing. Now I can entertain a motion to accept the fiscal year budget adjusted budget amendment. For year twenty twenty-five.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number thirteen thirty-five. And consider it first read.
Can we have a motion on the motion to accept the budget adjustment is our second? Second by council member Johnson. Any to comment? All in favor?
Aye.
It passes. And we'll have our second public hearing. We'll have a joint public hearing with the county commissioners. And this is on the amendment and the adoption of the new rates for the city of Rexburg fees. And also for those fees that include the county, which is the golf course. Is that it? It's the golf course. So Scott, you're up again.
All right, okay. Well, again, I think these are for the most part fees that you guys have seen several times at this point, but. We do, we did make some changes to the golf. Fees in the way that we. Did bump up some of those. Mine's blank, excuse me. The the green fees. And but also our offerings discounts to our citizens of Madison County, so. The. Parking fees are going through. A pretty sizable increase to try and keep up with costs of what it takes for being able to provide those services. And. And then with Rexburg Rapids, kind of the same thing that again where we're bumping up fees, but offering a discount to our citizens. To be able to use those facilities, so. If you guys have any specific questions, I would love to answer those now.
I know that Matt asked the golf board chair to.
Turn the time over to you.
Yeah, if you have questions about the the golf fee changes, I'm happy to answer them. Can I just give like a minute or two overview of of what the proposed changes have in them? Mostly modest increases. There are a couple of of the fees that went up by twenty or twenty-five percent. We've seen a lot of play come in from outside the county. And so what we've decided to do is or to recommend to you. Is to increase the rates by about twenty percent. And then offer a twenty percent discount for Madison County residents. And so residents wouldn't see the fees change very much. It would be people from, say, Idaho Falls or Jefferson Jefferson County that would see the the rates go up. That's one of the the big changes we've seen over the last couple of years is a lot more play from outside the county. The other thing was recommended by the the golf pro. Was a change to the the trail fee for people who bring their own carts. You can see that the trail fees deleted. We would just charge the same rate whether you're using the golf courses cart. Or your own cart, you're bringing your own. It simplify things for the the front desk. Cam, he's the golf pro, was saying that he's seen at other courses where it's just gotten out of control. People that bringing their other carts. We can't regulate the speed. We have governors on our carts that make sure people aren't. Doing jumps out of the sand traps and things. And he said, I wouldn't have a problem with you just outlawing outlawing outside carts. So this is kind of a compromise to say, well, it's to pay for the wear and tear on the course. If you bring your your own cart from outside. One of the members of the golf board brings his own cart and he said, I'm totally fine with that. It's nice to bring my own cart, have my own stereo system and my own cooler in it. It's worth it to me to to pay what I would do if I used one of the city and counties carts.
So am I reading that right? It's a fifty percent discount. From the fifty dollars. So they pay twenty-five.
That's the one that's being deleted.
Oh, the fifty is deleted.
Yeah.
Pay the same price.
So it used to be five dollars per nine holes for the trail trail fee or four fifty or something. And with the new proposed rates, it would be ten dollars per nine holes.
And don't the other courses around us also charge non non citizens a fee? A higher higher price, like Jefferson Hills?
I don't know the answer to that.
They do. Blackfoot does, Idaho Falls does, and also Jefferson does. They charge a more for out of the area.
Yeah. So that brings the question, how do we regulate that? How do we determine whether they're from in county or out of county and?
So one of the things that you'll see deleted there too is a surcharge for being out of the county. The way we're proposing doing it is just increasing the rates for everyone. And then the burden of proof is on the person asking for the discount to show that they're a resident. So if you don't want to claim you're a resident, you can just pay the the.
So that would have to happen. I mean, if you didn't buy a season's pass, if you just came to play, you'd you'd have to.
Just show your license.
Show your driver's license or something every time.
Yep, and they'll just take it off.
Or you pay the the.
Yeah, if you're paid with the extra three bucks or something, then.
Okay.
They they also are going to do three different ways. You can show your tax. Circle what they're giving out the tax bill. Or they're going to be able to give a card from John or Cameron. They're coming up with the idea that way. For two, that's going to be good for two years and. There's one other way that they're going to do. There's three different options. They could do, I think, to show the driver's license of the address around. Would be the third, I believe. There's three different ways.
Okay, and I mean, my only concern is that if unless this is well publicized and well known. We're gonna have a lot of residents, county residents, going to come and not have their, you know, maybe they don't have their wallet with them or they don't have. They don't certainly don't have their taxes with them, you know, so I I don't know how you're going to regulate that, but however it's done. I hope we'll we'll make it easy for county residents to get the discount.
Yeah, I agree. And I think Cam knows pretty much everyone who comes through the clubhouse.
That's probably right.
I don't think he's going to be checking ID for a lot of people.
Okay, I'm sure that's. Back to the carts. There's a lot of different things out there now, these little almost motorcycle cart things, you know, that. You put your bag on and are those going to fall under the same type of a of a deal as a as a motorized cart?
No. Yeah, there's a there's a discounted trail fee for a personal electric scooter or whatever it is that they're riding. I think it's about a hundred fifty a year for a for a season pass for it.
Okay, so there's they've got a separate fee for those type of.
And there's a season pass if you're bringing your own cart as well. I I just don't think it's on the list because it wasn't changing. Yeah, season pass only, yeah. I I can't think of anyone who it would affect. I I'm sure there are some out there, but they would have to pay the the trail fee. Yeah.
Any more questions for John?
I do have some to bring up, but it'll be after public hearing.
Okay. Also, just for the commissioners, we're doing the Rexburg Rapids also all for all county residents, so. Just Rexburg, so. Chief is, we're ready to proceed with the public hearing? Okay, go ahead.
Did we find out, we had a question last time, why it was county and not city residents? Did we get the answer to that?
I I didn't know that that was being discussed, so I apologize and not.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, and then so the discount for the county residents for Rexburg Rapids, does that apply to all the like the punch passes? All of it? Yeah, because I could only see the day admission, but I wanted to know if it applied to like the punch passes and everything. Does it?
My understanding, one of them, yes.
Okay. Yeah, it it would make sense that it does. Okay, I just didn't, I wanted to check on that.
Okay, any more comments, questions?
I'm sorry, I have one.
Okay.
That downtown resident parking stall, did it really go from twenty to two forty? I was just totally curious on that.
So so those are legitimate numbers and and part of what's going on there. In fact, I can probably let the police chief. Answer that, but uh, the my understanding is is that really what we've looked at is that. That the cost that we've been at for so long of just, there there no way paying for. For the upkeep, the maintenance of these stalls. And so we're trying to correct that. This still doesn't even represent a full correction. It's just trying to get to. Get a jump on it and get get up higher, but then to. Kind of rethinking the way that those these are are being dealt with, so do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, so again, that was covered for.
Hey, Kellen, can you come up to the microphone?
So. This was also to cover the cover the cost of the stall for the snow removal, the asphalt. Plus all the stuff that we have to pay the permits and the enforcement, all that type of stuff stuff, but. For the for that specifically, we're going to allow to bill monthly so they can come in. And what it equivalates is to. Twenty bucks a month, which is. On the lower side of of parking, we're not going to allow that for everybody, but for the for the downtown business. You know, they can come in because a lot of times the businesses don't provide those parking passes for their employees. So it's actually on the employees to buy those those permits, so we would do that on a on a monthly basis, so it equates to twenty bucks a month.
And are they, I know we talked about this in budget meetings, but I guess seeing it all laid out. I was wondering, I mean, like thirty bucks for parking in front of a driveway? Seems to me like like if you block someone's driveway, it seems like you should be paying more than thirty bucks. So like, I don't know, is that is that a comparable fee for those parking tickets?
Well, I can tell you that you get more upset of a thirty dollar fee than they do a ninety dollar speeding infraction, so. We kind of just went at at five dollars basically across the board, except for the tow bill. Normally, the drag and drop ordinance is started off at like a hundred and then we bumped it up to a hundred and fifty. Well, now tow trucks are are charging two hundred flat rate fee. So that was the significant jump for that. To be real honest, we don't really use the drag and drop. It's there in case the street department wants to do it, but there's a lot of verbiage in there that they have to follow and we have to follow. But the the five dollar basically across the board was to cover kind of cover the cost of that, so.
And you feel like that's enough then?
I mean. It depends on who who you ask. I I I kind of stayed on the more conservative side to not upset the residents. But at the same time, thirty dollars is is thirty dollars. They probably only get it once and then not park there again. So.
If I could, back to the to the downtown parking, those stalls are found where? In the parking lots?
So we call it, we call it the Sioux Lot. Gringos and then the Paramount, but also back here as well is considered downtown. They have to have a permit to park there as well.
Okay. Okay, and so how many of those, how many of those permits do you think we we issue per year?
Um, we counted them. Task of counting every single stall and and we're. I think we're about, we're just over two hundred is if I remember correctly, but it was.
Issue, we issue that many every year?
Yes.
And that and that becomes a designated stall for that individual?
Not for that individual, for that. For for the. Are you are you asking the downtown resident parking?
Yes.
So yeah, it's for the lot, yeah. And and basically, it's if there's an open spot, as long as they have that permit, they can park there. It's not a designated stall.
Okay. I'm just wondering how you handle the the snow removal even then. I mean, that's got to be a nightmare. If doing snow removal.
It is.
If you if they're they're going to pay two hundred and forty dollars a year, they're going to want to. You know. Keep your car there. And so anyway, I just sounds like a. I didn't really realize we issued parking permits for. Individual lots.
Yes.
But I guess this will deter some of them. I would imagine.
Can I ask one more question? I was just curious. The cellphone forensic download fee? So you're paying that to? You have to pay that, like, could you explain that?
Okay, so we have a system that we, it just went up in price significantly. And basically what that is, is anytime. Any type of cellphone forensic download, it takes our detectives. There's only two certified officers in the entire department. And they basically dump that phone, so any deleted texts, any type of stuff on there. They 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 can access even after the fact, so. The program alone is thirteen thousand dollars per year. And the time that it takes our officers, one cellphone is about four hours to download and. We're doing more and more for Fremont, Madison, Jefferson, Rigby, and we just. It's taking a tremendous amount of time to do that for the other agencies, plus. The cost of the USB drive to put that on there, because I mean, we're talking sometimes on the upwards of three hundred gigabytes of data. So that's all costs that the city is paying for and we're not recuperating anything, so. A hundred dollar basically download is basically the cost of that to kind of kind of help recuperate that.
And who pays that fee?
So it would be anybody outside of the Rexburg Police Department. So if Madison Sheriff's Office is downloading a phone. They pay us and then they go after the suspect for restitution. At the prosecutor's office. So basically, it's on the owner of the cellphone that we're downloading essentially, but it. Has to go through the court process.
I see. So is that high enough then? That hundred dollars, is that high?
We didn't want to really ruin the 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 relationship side of it. It's more of, I mean, no, it's not. But it's moderate enough that we can recuperate some of that money for the program, the training. The training alone per officer is four thousand dollars. So it's, you know, we're trying to recuperate that money and and we do several hundred cellphone downloads a year.
But just notice that shooting range maintenance fee, tell me about that.
Okay, so we have. Three agencies, Jefferson, Rigby, and Fishing Game that use. We give access to their range. They obviously schedule it through us. We give them access. But it's again costing us a tremendous amount of money for the upkeep, the cleaning. We have a target targeting system that requires one by twos. They get shot up, they get put a ton of staples in them because they don't use what we provide, which are. The gigantic metal clip, paper clips to hold the targets up. And it's just, it's costing me a ton of money. And so we threw that in there again, not to over exceed it, but five hundred dollars a year, I think, is. Very reasonable for somebody to come from an outside agency to use our range. We're to the point where we're needing to expand. Based on our officer size, and so we're trying to foresee that to the future to kind of prepare. So that we can kind of recuperate some of the money for the asphalt, the paint, the targeting systems that.
So is that an annual fee per agency?
Correct.
Okay. Makes sense.
Any more questions? Thanks, Kellen.
Bet.
Scott, do you have anything else?
No, unless you guys have any other questions for me.
Any questions for Scott? Okay, so now we move into our public hearing, same format as before. We'll have the 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 those that are for. And those that are against or neutral and those that are against, opposes, so open this public hearing. Allow the county now to do the same. Any of those that are for. The proposed, it's a resolution, I guess. And in the neutral. Seeing none, is there any in the negatives? Seeing none, we can close our public hearing. And I'll entertain a motion from the council to adopt. The amendment amendment for the city of Rexburg fees.
Mike, before we make that, I want to bring up a couple of things on the golf.
Okay.
On the cart fees that we talked about, that John talked about and discussing with Brent and also Matt. And kind of going through, we do have some concerns out there. Cameron brought it up on the carts. But as we looked at that after the golf board meeting and a future discussion and talking with Cameron. And also Brent and all Matt, I think, in my opinion, that we're moving a little fast on making that where they just use our carts only. I think it's going to cause a lot more problems than what it's going to solve. We're trying to solve a parking problem with the trailers. Which we can do by science. We're trying to solve other things that's allowing more people in the carts. I think we, I'm fully against all the fees except that one part of it, the carts. I mean, I would make the motion to accept that, accept that one category of the carts and we'll send that back to the dare or the golf board. To readdress that and look at maybe a better way before we get jumped that far into allow no carts.
No, that that's not right.
So as we discussed that, like I say, I talked to, I've talked to Brent about this. And I saw, as we talked about this, I think we should send that back to the golf board on that one part of it. And let's readdress that with Cameron and see if there's a better way than than just outlaw outlaw all carts. And pay the same as our carts, because what's going to do is overwhelm our carts. Which at one time they was talking about, it's a good thing to have their private carts on there. And now they're trying to solve a different problem. So there's a lot of different problems out there, a lot of different discussions. That I think we need to readdress back to the golf board.
Yeah, uh, so we, we've had a discussion and the public, if there's any changes, we would have to redo this.
Deborah, I can't hear you.
Yeah.
And we're not outlawing carts.
Yeah, we've had the discussion and the, uh, the public hearing portion of it. If there's any changes, we're going to have to redo it. And republish and that's.
I wonder if they're assuming again, I think, maybe they're assuming that if we do it higher where we're, then we can go lower.
That's correct. You can always.
But Colin said we're outlawing them and that's not accurate because we're only charging the same price as if you rented a golf cart there. We're not outlawing private carts. So what he said wasn't accurate.
That's what I meant is that we're charging the exact same as our carts. So why bring your own carts on if you can use our carts? So.
Okay, so, so there's no changes that are proposed, proposed here. We're, we're good to go. That's my biggest concern. So.
I'm good.
Again, I think any of those conversations, like, go back to the golf board and then, if they, again, if then if they want to make further changes, then they're just a procedure.
Right.
Again, that will, we will take it up as it comes up.
I cannot hear that.
Right, so.
This will be turned, our turn is up here, so hold some. We can, the public hearing, you can go less than, oh, close. Take a moment, so if he wants to remove that one out, we can do that, correct?
It depends on the nature. If it's a, if it's a fundamental or substantial change to it, again, so I, I think where counsel, a member Johnson got office, again, they're banning it.
Yeah, we're not banning them.
Well, I, I think that, yeah, it's how you look at that fee if you wanna go back and discuss those things, but, but I don't think the nature, I think the parking aren't gonna change. And so again, then if you go back to the golf board, uh, and then the procedure of going down in that, again, the public area department or anything that increases.
And this would increase it.
We are deleting the, the discount.
Yeah, so it is.
Removing it. So.
Can I say something?
Sure.
So, um, I just have to say on that, that I, I feel like I listened to the golf board. I have talked to Cam about it. And I think it's, um, there are legitimate reasons for keeping it the way that the golf board recommended it. We need the money, um, from those carts. And, um, Cam said he feels like the people who bring their own carts are a little rougher on the course. And so if they're only paying, if they're not paying the same price as people who rent a cart, we're not recovering the cost to keep those greens looking the way that they do. So we need that money. Um, the parking is a problem because they come and bring their big trailers and they take up several stalls. And we could try to tell them to park down below, but I don't know who's gonna regulate that and make sure that they really do park down below. So I feel like they actually had legitimate reasons for keeping it the way that it's been proposed anyway. So I'd be willing to make a motion if other people are ready for that.
Let me just clarify, Colin, if you're there, um, what did, were there some concerns that came out of the discussion with the golf board about this?
There was a, there was a really fast discussion about those carts. After looking at it after the fact and, you know, the golf board said, let's just do it. But after looking at it after the fact and the concerns that Cam brought up, I think we're jumping too far forward on that one part of the golf carts without looking at more simple ways to solve the problem. One is signage, one is communication, one is looking at different things before we start charging the exact same fee as our carts, because what it's gonna do, there's a lot of people gonna say, I'm not gonna bring my carts on, I'm just gonna use yours. Well, man, that's gonna cause a big problem on our part of it. When we have big tournaments and that, we're gonna have to buy more carts. So that's gonna increase a huge amount of, um, budgeting to be able to buy more carts. I just think we're moving too fast on the carts without readdressing some of the concerns by, by charging the exact same as our carts. And just talking to other ones.
Again, again, correct me if I'm wrong. If we pass this the way it sits, um, we can go back and re- revisit this, right? And if they decide to charge less for, for somebody to bring their own cart, we could do that, right?
It's, we're. Yeah, cuz we're deleting.
Yeah, we go back to the golf board and they would then recommend to us, but we could make that change because it's, it's lowering the fee, not increasing the fee.
Well, we're deleting that fee. We're deleting it. Because then they're, we're just gonna charge them the same as we charge anyone who rents a cart. So that, that fee that we were charging for people who bring their own cart, we're deleting that fee. And then anyone who brings their own cart is going to be charged the same price as someone who rents a cart.
Yeah, but we could, we could adopt, we could adopt something that says, if you're gonna bring your own cart, you, we, we can discount the, the season pass cart fee to you. We could do that without having to go through the whole, whole hearing process again. No?
You'd have to have the public hearing again.
Can I just clarify a couple of things?
Yeah, sure.
There is no season pass cart fee. There's a season pass trail fee for people who bring their own cart. Yeah, okay. And then, um, uh, there hasn't been any discussion of this by the golf board since we, um, voted to recommend it.
Okay.
And they were all in favor of it.
Yeah.
At the time. Yeah. Yeah, because we're deleting this fee. Yep.
Fee is just being struck and it's, there's nowhere to go with that. So.
Okay.
So Deborah, on this, if we change, I try to adopt all of our fees except that one and have that go back, we'd have to redo this whole thing?
I think you'd have to prob- you'd have to have a, a redo the public hearing. And I think, and Spencer, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but you would have to redo the public hearing. You could probably do it tonight. However, um, because I mean, it's not passed, it's up for changes. Uh, but I would, I would, uh, think that you'd have to have the public, and I know nobody commented on it, but if somebody wanted to do that, that would be open and appropriate for that.
Cause when I talked to Matt, he didn't think we'd have to do that. We could just go back on that one area, but it's up to Spence.
Where it's a public hearing, then, then yes, if we're changing it after the public hearing, if we did it prior to that, then you'd already have the public hearing. Everybody could comment on it and give testimony. Where it's after that, yeah, I agree, you'd have to open it.
We'd have to reopen it. I think the distinction that maybe Matt was trying to make or, and again, I didn't, I assume he was thinking because it wasn't a omission of fee or getting rid, I, I, I assume he looked at it as just a decrease. And so then maybe it, it wasn't that way. So again, I think that if you'd wanna do that, uh, we'd re, I mean, there would be a motion to reopen uh, the public hearing, ask for any for, against or neutral, close it and then, uh, ask for another vote. That would be the proper procedure, I think. Yes, because I don't think the nature, yeah. Yes, we're here. And again, it's, it's the entirety, this is a very small portion of, of everything that was there.
Yeah, so I just, I wanna say I, I respect our golf board. So I, I'm gonna make a motion because I, they haven't met since then. So I'm not sure what other, you know, people have been saying about it. So I'd just like to make a motion that we approve, um, or, or resolution number twenty twenty five oh seven.
Okay. I'll second that.
Have a motion by council member, uh, Johnson and a second by council member Eric Erickson. Any more discussion? It's not all in favor?
I have.
Those opposed? It carries. Do you guys, do you guys gotta do your thing?
I'll make a motion. We approve if he changes this, presented to the golf. Getting a second to that, uh, all in favor?
Nice.
Okay.
Hey, I'll agree with you.
I mean, you're welcome to stick around.
There are also airport fees on there. Aren't there also airport fees on there?
Yes, there is.
Do you have anything to do with the airport? Oh, I thought that was county.
I didn't see, but we don't have any changes.
Yeah, there's, I didn't notice any.
I thought there were, there were changes to the.
Or golf would be the one that we overlap on.
Come back anytime.
Yeah.
You too.
Saw something about the airport.
Okay, we'll go right into our staff reports. Finance, Scott, you're up again.
Oh, okay.
Do the fiscal year twenty twenty six utility rates instead of public hearing for September third, twenty twenty five.
All right. So with the, uh, utility rates, um, we do wanna set a public hearing for September third. Um, I know I brought this to you last, last council meeting. We have made some changes. And so that rate study did come back, um, or at least in, in part came back with, uh, it looks like things will be a little bit more expensive. And so some of those cuts that we had when I presented last time, uh, we are suggesting that we do not go with those. Um, and keep things more on an even keel. Um, there are some changes, uh, even still though. The garbage, uh, you guys have, I think, seen these numbers. Um, safety lighting, uh, as a fee will be removed and yeah, that's kind of it in a nutshell. So again, any questions? Happy to answer.
So my understanding is, is that for the average citizen, there's, there'll be a, there may be a slight few cent change, but mostly it's gonna stay about the same. Is that about, that's what I'm getting from this? Okay.
The garbage.
Like half percentage decrease in this one, the, the resident sample.
Okay.
Cause the lighting fee is gone.
Yeah.
Say, any questions for Scott? If not, I'll entertain a motion for, to set the public hearing for the twenty twenty six security rates for September third.
So move.
There we have a mo- motion, the mo- motion by council member Chambers. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by council member Chan- Reeser. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that carries.
Bye.
Scott, I think you're done, huh?
Per, per minute.
Now Matt's, or Keith's on the hot seat now.
All right. Thank you. Uh, so I have a few items on the agenda tonight. Uh, so the first one is resolution number twenty twenty five zero nine, and this is with the Idaho Transportation Department. This is the TAP grant, um, that we received, and this is for that river pathway and pedestrian bridge. And so this is the pathway to the east of Second East Bridge, right? So that's that pathway going along the north side of the river and then with a bridge uh, coming across the river to the south side trail. So that's what this grant represents on that. And so we need to, um, have a resolution on that.
Okay, any questions for Keith on this? Entertain a motion to accept this resolution or on this resolution?
I will make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty twenty five oh nine.
Okay. A motion to accept it, uh, by council member Johnson. Is there a second? Second by Colin Erickson. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Are those opposed? Okay. That passes.
All right.
Next.
Thanks. So the next, uh, resolution, resolution number ten for us, and this is for, uh, the signal to go on Seventh South and Center Street. So up by the university's ball fields there. Um, and so the, we were able to, the state was able to find some funds so we could move that along faster. Um, and so we need to have this resolution and then we'll see about getting that bid out and then seeing when that signal can go in and be completed up there.
And what's our cost on that?
So our cost is about, um, I think it was like a little over eighty eight thousand.
The rest of it's paid by the grant.
Yeah, the rest is, it's about a million dollar grant on that. So that's our match.
It's not bad.
And can I ask a question?
Sure.
So we don't have a timeline yet, like you.
No, yeah, not until we bid it out. And then once we have a contractor, it's gonna, it's gonna take some time. Just ordering the materials for a signal, a lot of times can be months out. And so until we have that, then I'll know. And then as we enter into the, the winter months, we'll, we'll have to see, cuz with the construction, things like that, it might be a, a spring project. Fortunately, there's no railroad up there, so that's good.
Okay, so I entertain a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty five dash ten.
I'll make that motion for, accept the resolution twenty five, twenty, uh, twenty twenty five ten.
Okay, motion made by, uh, mem- council member Colin Erickson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Chambers. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
That's for us.
That delay gets you every time. All right, the next, um, item I have is just approval of the contract with the architectural firm Method Studios, and this is for, um, the expansion of our water department, uh, building. And so we just need a acceptance of that. And it was for, it was ninety five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for their services for that project.
Any, any questions on this?
The only question I have for Keith, do we have the budget for all this?
Um, yes.
That's the only question I have.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion in to, to approve the architectural and engineering services for the water department building.
I move if we accept, uh, architectural and engineering service for our water department building renovation.
Okay, motion made by council member Reeser. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by council member Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And, oh, any, any against? Okay.
Hey, thanks. Um, so the next one we have is, uh, so we have that funds through the FAA, and this is for the airport pavement maintenance. And so this is a contract with Ardura, uh, to provide the design and construction management of this project. Um, and so that contract is for a hundred and forty one thousand, four hundred and thirty nine dollars. So we're seeking council's approval on that. Uh, this is one that FAA picks up the majority of that, costs ninety percent of that.
There's no questions on this? Uh, entertain a motion?
I do have one question.
Okay.
Will this pavement endure until we move the airport?
So this is a, a surface treatment on the, on the pavement. So it's hard to say when the airport's gonna move.
It's good for five years?
Yeah. So about a five year window on that. So it's just a rejuvenation. So basically we come in with and, and oil that they put down at GSB that kind of rejuvenates that pavement as well as they put a little sand in with it to give a little more friction course with that, and then they'll crack seal any of the cracks that have opened up on it and then repaint the airport.
Okay. Any more questions? If not, I'll approve a motion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract with Ardura.
I'll make that motion.
Hey, motion made by Eric Erickson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Colin Erickson. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hey, that passes.
No, it's, well, we can have the other one. All right, the last one I have is just to accept, uh, the bid from uh, Straight Stripe Painting. Uh, they were the low bidder for doing this pavement maintenance, uh, project out at the airport. And they were, their bid was for two hundred and eighty eight thousand and fifty five dollars. Um, and so we're just seeking council's approval on that for.
Okay, any questions on this?
I'd like that motion. That we set the bid for two hundred and eighty eight thousand, oh fifty five, from Straight Stripe Painting for the airport.
Hey, you got a motion approved by Eric Erickson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Reeser. Any more discussion? Not all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Hey, that's it.
All right, thank you.
Anybody have anything else for Keith, since he's up there on the hot seat? Trailhead's still the same, right? Just waiting for the railroad.
Yeah, we're waiting for the railroad. We have, we don't have a, a firm date from them. They, we've sent them the money a while back. Um, so we're just waiting on them. We keep calling them. Um, so we're just waiting on them. We keep calling them. We'll keep pushing and, and asking, but oh, yeah. Yep, yeah, just the confusion, right? Hopefully people understand that when a signal head is bagged, it means there's no signal there.
So you have to sit there and watch people stop.
Yeah. Yeah, we're trying to push them as, as fast as, as we can with that, but it can be difficult with the rubber.
Anything to themselves.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Keith's probably not the right, I'm not sure if you'll know the answer, but we got, we all got that email about the soccer fields.
Yeah, I can talk to that a little bit.
Yeah. Is that an older picture from when we were redoing the?
Yeah, so we had, well, there were some things that, that came up. So when we were putting in that sewer line, the crossing across the river. Um, when they, when the contractor came in, they hit some of the lines or the valve boxes and broke the main line. So they came back and fixed that, but there was another one that, that wasn't known until later, and they came back and and fixed that later. And that's why that, that park got so dry. And now we're pumping the water to it, unfortunately.
Doing better now, right?
It's, yeah, I haven't been over there to look, but it generally, as you put that water to it, we'll, we'll see that grass start coming back, but but yeah, that was, that was the issue behind it.
Maybe you can tell us who we need to talk to, probably just the, the parks, but the fence over on the nature park that goes around the big toy. On the, oh, the northeast corner is down.
The northeast corner, okay. So by the canal. Then, okay. So we got a section of it that's just down.
One section from one pole to the next, yeah. It's just laying there on the ground. It's kind of folded over.
So it's generally that whole fabric, right? Did the poles go over?
Just, just the, the chain links and slant.
Okay. All right, yeah. We can look at that.
It looks like somebody's pulled it up and reattached it, probably would replace anything.
Hey Keith, would you briefly discuss the discussion we had with the state on Twelfth West on maybe going in together on trying to fix that intersection? So the rest of council knows.
Yeah, on Twelfth West and Main Street are thirty three. So we were, we've been having conversations with ITD and talking to them to see if they have any funds available as we look at what improvements um, to that intersection will be or needs to be. Um, there's some of that that's already moving forward that, uh, some of the boxes right on that corner, they haven't put the curb in yet. There's some of those signal boxes that the wires are pulled into need to be relocated back. And we're having discussions on that as well to see. There's a lot of that signal, the ultimate build out for that intersection, um, is going to require those, that whole signal system to be relocated. Um, so we're just looking to see, well, if those boxes need to be relocated, it means that all the wiring has to be repold. And so I'm, I'm gonna have conversations with them. It's like, can we put in extra wire so then we don't have to redo the wire again, uh, when that signal goes in. So we'll see what options are available. Uh, but, but yes, we've been discussing, uh, with ITD. We haven't had the formal meeting with them, but I've just been doing preliminary kind of discussions with them to see if they can get it in their program and see what funding they have available to contribute, uh, to that improvements at that intersection.
Thank you.
More questions for Keith? Hey, thanks Keith. Was it too painful to that? Okay, mayor's business. Scott's gonna, got some stuff for us from the mayor. He needs to discuss.
So this is just by way of an update for, um, the process that urban renewal has with trying to purchase the the school district property. Um, our initial, um, offer has been rejected and there's been a counter offer. Um, we've looked at it and the position of the city with, with the counter offer that urban renewal wants to give, we won't change, um, the position of the city. The city will still pay the exact same amount under the new counter offer. So there's no action needed, uh, but we just wanted to keep you guys apprised of what was going on, so. You have anything to add, Scott?
Let's have questions. Because so I understand, so we offered them money, they came back and said, you want more? And we said, well, we would be unwilling to pay.
So, yeah, they, they requested a lot more. Um, and we said, we're not going to pay a lot more. Um, ultimately what they did is not raise um, our offer at all. What we did is get rid of their participation, tearing down that building. So the offer stays the same as far as dollar amount goes. We just got rid of the participation and tearing down that building from them, so.
That's, and still they're, they have, they need to work.
No, that, that's. To be going to them. And so we're just keeping you apprised. Again, nothing changes on the city side or the county side. Urban renewal is the only one that's affected.
And essentially we were looking at possibly a billion dollar demolition bill for that and.
Yes.
Correct. So urban renewal would now be taking care of that, yeah.
So urban renewal would be paying that instead of the school district.
Yeah, so what we, the original offer was that we'd split that fifty fifty at two million dollars. Um, so yeah, they'd just get rid of that portion of it and just stay with the dollar amount that we offer.
So, yep. Any other questions regarding that?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Hey. Thanks, Scott. Okay, we're going to our, our, uh, we have no islands, let's see, islands consideration. We have none. We have our second reading. Law Order Number thirteen thirty three fiscal year twenty twenty six budget appropriation. Did you have something, did you need to say something, Scott?
Um, oh, sorry. Just by way of, uh, there had been discussions about the, um, the Fourth of July celebration and, um, so it's, it's still the recommendation of staff that, that we move forward with budget as it is, but then that, that the celebration itself can be discussed, um, as far as the actual program goes. And again, I think Scott has more detail on that.
Yeah, so one of the conversations we had obviously, um, two meetings ago was, you know, we didn't want to pay the whole thing as a city. Um, the county actually has put some money in. They've put half of what we've requested into their budget. We just have to make a formal request for that. So with that, we felt like maybe we shouldn't pull it. Cause then we're gonna have to come back to you guys and do a major budget adjustment if we do that. And we know you guys don't like that, so uh, the recommendation from Matt was that we just keep it as is, knowing that the county and some others that we've talked to have agreed to pay. So we don't have a total amount yet, but we know that they've agreed to a hundred, um, so half of what we were requesting, so.
Didn't we untable that and vote against it?
We did.
Yeah, so what are, I'm confused about what you're saying.
Matt's asking to put it back.
In the budget? In the budget that we already, this is our second reading?
Actually removed, I didn't think.
It wasn't removed.
I don't think we removed.
We voted no on it.
Chose not to untable, I remember.
The seventy five hundred?
And it's just there.
Yeah, so, so it wasn't removed from the budget and we went forward as it.
No, I asked specifically if that was removed from the budget last time. The, the two hundred thousand that you were talking about, I asked specifically if that was removed and you said yes, that it was seventy five hundred when we voted on this last.
So let's see, Matt sent me.
Yeah.
We voted no on it. Wait, no, I didn't get an email from him.
So Matt sent one and I apologize for that, but okay, there we go. I didn't see that.
Do you have it?
Was it sent yesterday? Okay, so there was like two options. Option one. You should go ahead and read it.
Yep, go ahead.
So leave current budget intended general fund budget. So you would leave the, uh, two hundred twenty four thousand into the contributions uh, for the, the independent state. And then the internal budget of two hundred sixty thousand. And then so the net subsidy by the city would be sixteen thousand. Option two, uh, change the budget. So he says that, I'm guessing it's still in. So we could change the budget intended general fund budget as follows. This is what we've done in the past. Uh, revenues contribution would be twenty thousand from Toyota. And ten thousand from the county for a thirty thousand dollar budget plus our own contribution, which would bring that to forty thousand for next year's budget. Those are option one and option two. I want to proceed with that.
Okay, but I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm still really confused because this is a second reading of our budget. Right? And we had a public hearing on it. And I specifically asked if it was in there and I was told, no, it is not in there. So how could we be adding it on a second reading?
I was, so this is in, let's just look. This one is in. It's just, it was in there currently, so it's leave.
No, I asked if you took it out and you told me yes, that you took it out. That's what I was told two weeks ago. I was told it was taken out and that's what I voted on.
Yeah. Yes, to your form. That was taken out. This time out, this is seventy five hundred that we're normalizing.
Yeah.
And so you get two options to that seventy five hundred.
But this is not seventy five hundred dollars. So how could that be?
He's actually asking to increase that.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying is how, but how could you increase it at all is what I'm asking. If we had a public hearing on a different budget, that's, that's what, that's my question that I'm trying to understand. How could you add that in if we voted on something different two weeks ago and we had a public hearing on it?
So I asked him so that we could be on the same page of, like, she's, council member Brianna specifically asked if, if it was just the remainder that we always do. She specifically asked and goes, oh no, it's, it's what was in the budget, this was, it's in the budget, knowing that they're not gonna be, right? Cause you still need it, we still need your approval to use that.
But, but see, I, I don't feel like this is that big of an issue, but it's a broader issue that how can you tell me one thing that I'm voting on and then come back two weeks later and tell me I'm voting on something different? That doesn't make sense. And that wasn't what we, we had a public hearing. That's what we said. So I'm asking how you could change that two weeks later at the next meeting? Because how could we have that happening all the time?
So I'm just, I pulled the minutes.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, the minutes right here.
We'll have a look, cause I unfortunately.
It says here, council member Johnson asked to remove from the table the budget adjustment in mayor's city council department to book the artist for Stadium two fifty event. And then council member Johnson moved to remove from the table the budget adjustment. Let's see. That's duplicate. Council member Reese seconded the motion. Council president Walker asked for a vote and all ayes.
And that was for the budget.
I wasn't here.
Which became irrelevant because.
You were online.
It's like I wasn't here. Well, I must not have been here for that part of the discussion.
Okay, so on the, on the public hearing, this says that, uh, that aside from Stadium two fifty, no changes had occurred.
Aside from taking it out of it, yeah.
So aside.
Yes.
And, and then that, there was a public hearing on that. And there was no testimony. They closed. Let's see, asked for a vote and they all voted aye.
But you, you might.
Aside.
Aside from taking it out because it was in there previous, I asked if it was taken out and I was told yes it was.
So that's what the public hearing was based on.
Was based on having it out.
According to this motion, yes.
Yes. So, so you can't just stick it back in.
So, so that's, that's how that one plays out. Uh, let's see. Oh, that's just, that just moves on to foregone. So with that being said, second read, it would be aside.
It would be the seventy five hundred only.
My, my apologies for confusion on that.
Yeah, that's how it would. That's what you'd be voting in second reading. So as far as what you're going to do with the, uh, budget amount.
It would be an adjustment later.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
So.
Which is what we talked about. Yes, okay.
So I, I believe Matt is also correct that you could, uh, where he updated you on the two fifty celebration and the contributions that were made, you can change it at this point and, uh, amend it here. Or, you know, you'd have to just do it later.
And if we amend it here, we don't have to.
So option one or option two. You know that we get, and maybe I'll just get my.
But if we amended it here, we don't have to have.
Option one is not an option.
Well, it's, yeah, because it's not in there.
Right.
So.
So.
So the only option, choosing the option we got.
Yeah.
That's what you're going to decide. So you're just gonna go with option two. It's going to be basically a total of forty thousand is what the budget's going to be set at. With the contribution of twenty from stones, ten from the county and ten from the city. That's where we'll sit.
You started seventy five hundred.
Okay, I'm not trying to be uphill here.
I'm just going by Matt's.
Okay, but Matt wasn't in the meeting. And so we did not put forty thousand in there two weeks ago. We did not put forty thousand in there. That's what I was saying the entire time. Yeah, that, you can't put it in there. It wasn't in there. And I know this isn't a big deal, but it is a big deal because we vote on things and we have to follow through with what we said that we voted on. And we did not vote on forty thousand. We voted on seventy five hundred.
Was ten thousand dollars, is that what was in the budget?
Seventy five hundred is what was in there for that, like it's always been.
Just for the fireworks.
Yeah, just for the fireworks. That is what we voted on.
I don't know what the actual number is because the number is up here. So that would some, that would also be something I would clarify. Because you're, this is in general fund and here's your general fund uh, expenses and revenues right here. So just to make sure we're all on the same page because it was aside. So whatever number it is, it was aside. So I, I don't know what that is, that number is, and if it's.
But, okay, I would, because, because if I ask staff and they tell me something, I am planning that they are telling me what is in the budget.
But I just wanna make sure it's clarified. We know what we're, we've got.
His options are, are not what we're voting on.
Yeah, your, your second read.
Well, we're second read, but we voted on.
Yeah. Which was not either option A or B. It was not option one or two of what Matt sent, is not what we voted on.
Well, then, then I'm, I'm good with that. But as it stands, there's no whatever it is, it's aside.
Yeah, and, and.
In the stadium, for the Stadium two fifty.
Agreed with.
I mean, as far as records, I would want the minutes.
So do we know, can we see what's in the budget then? Can we see what's actually in there?
On this, I can't.
So we don't know what we're voting on then.
Well, I, like I said, I don't know what, uh, his totals are because, you know, two hundred fifty thousand, two hundred sixty five thousand, if that was in there prior, then it's gonna reflect in the, in the numbers, in the image.
Well, I'm not gonna vote on something I don't know what is in there.
But currently, right now, according to the minutes, the second read would be, you've set it aside. So according.
Set it aside, took it out. Okay.
Yeah, it's aside. So that's what, that's what you've got here. So there's no there's nothing on it. If you don't wanna make any changes to it, your second read is you're done.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, that matters to me. I think we have to be accurate in what we're voting on.
I'm, I'm good with accurate to whatever the record is and whatever you make, decision you make. Uh, it, but if you wanted to change it.
Now's the time to.
You could do that at the second read. If it's not clear and it's not something you wanna do until Matt's here and can tell you what those numbers are, then again, the second read would be aside. So we haven't made any decisions on Stadium two fifty budget.
So we, so we can postpone our, our second read on that till next time?
I, I, no, you don't need to.
We'll just do a budget adjustment later.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But would it be smart to table it until we get Matt back here to figure out what is really there?
I wouldn't.
Not, not our budget. Yeah, I wouldn't table the budget.
Scott, I've got another somewhat related question because it seems like this part's kinda died down a little bit. I saw somewhere that the state of Idaho is kicking in twenty five hundred bucks to every city for this. Okay, so I'm just making sure you're aware of that because I know it's not a lot with some of the numbers we're looking at, but every little bit helps. If the state is offering us some money, we should take.
Absolutely. We're, we're on top.
Great, great. Good to know. Thanks.
Hey, no more questions or entertain a motion? Hey, no more questions or intended motion that do?
Ready for that motion?
Yeah, I'm ready for it.
I move that we, uh, consider ordinance number thirteen thirty-three second read.
Here we go. Motion by council member chambers. Is there a second?
I, I would add to that motion as per the minutes from our last meeting.
Right.
Just, just because these minutes from last meeting are very confusing. Because there's two votes here, one by, one that, that council member Johnson made a motion, but then Colin made this, this almost the same motion. So I don't know what went on between those two, but there's something weird about.
In the last meeting?
Yeah.
Why?
According to the minutes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. One table, untabled.
Tabled the thing and we.
But if you tape, okay.
Put a no on that.
Before you.
Yeah.
So it's just.
So we untabled and then we voted on it.
Oh, okay. I see. I see. I got you.
Yeah. So, so that is, uh, something that we'll just, it just, it's there. So it's down. And Mariana, let's make a point that that's on page five of the minutes. There.
Hey, you have a motion to second. I'm in favor.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, sorry. I thought Eric's second. Eric Erickson second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, the second reading for ordinance number thirteen thirty-four, Rexburg Police Facility bond election ordinance. We have a motion to accept that. Consider it second read.
Yeah. Oh.
Before you do that, we would like to just make sure that we show you that we have made the changes. We met with bond counsel. So we've made some changes, the way the verbiage is, the way it's actually presented. So it probably wouldn't hurt just to pull it up and kind of look at it real quick.
Good idea.
And Scott, so everybody knows it's on the website too. It's been clarified and printed up. So people understand both ways.
Yes, thank you very much, Colin. And I'd actually encourage you to go to the website, uh, because there is additional information out there as well. We'll continue to put more. So if you remember, the biggest issue was just the placement of the water. Bond that we're paying. And so we were able to work with bond counsel to scroll through.
Want to go a little farther? Right about here. Actually.
Yeah, right there. So if you remember, the yellow part was actually in the middle. So it was very confusing. So we put that at the bottom. Uh, they've agreed to allow us to do that. We also ticked out some verbiage that was a little confusing. Um, so it's very clear that that is the water system and is paid by revenues from the water utility and not from general obligation that. So they allowed us to clarify that as well. So we did have to keep it, but we were allowed to move it and to clarify a little bit more. So hopefully that meets, uh, what you were concerned about. So.
We played around with placement a little bit. Um, it would have been nice to like get it up over, out of the way up top, but then it, that just made it more confusing when we really looked at it. Um, unfortunately, it's kind of the last thing that's there before they go to vote, but we feel like that this at least explains itself well enough that people should understand what's, what it's disclosing. So.
Any questions, concerns?
Looks good.
So we have a motion on the table?
No.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I propose that we, um, ordinance or, uh, ordinance number thirteen thirty-four and consider it second read.
Hey, we have a motion on the table by, uh, council member Reese. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Colin Erickson. Any more discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
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 Close. Hey, that takes care of all that. Thank you, gentlemen. Now we bring this to our consent calendar, which is the minute, approved the minutes for the July twenty-six, twenty-five meeting and approved the city of Rexburg bills. Do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent calendar and pay the bills.
Any motion on table by council member Johnson? Is there a second? I'll second that. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And if there's nothing else, any more discussion, council, anything else that you talk about?
Could I just ask a couple of questions since we've got Spencer here? With the police bond, tell me, are, are we under the same kinds of obligations like say for a, a, a school district bond? As far as promoting this bond, can we, can we promote it? As a city?
We can educate is the word. So we can't, we remain neutral. Uh, but so. Other jurisdictions recently have become, have gotten into, uh, at, at least legal entanglements, issues, uh, when they sent out official mailers uh, that made, uh, what the county prosecutor in Bonneville thought were, uh, less objective uh, claims on the mailer and more subjective, meaning more, you know, advocating for a certain thing. And so a-again, um, we've talked significantly about this, uh, with, you know, bond counsel with others. Uh, again, there's always that line, uh, but again, uh, the statute's pretty clear that, uh, we can't use any county or, excuse me, city or municipality resources to promote only to educate. And again, any of the language that we use, uh, if we look at it, um, on, uh, the website, the calculator, again, it is to remain neutral and give a very, um, kind of objective view of the situation. Um, and then answer questions appropriately. Uh, again, and there's, uh, there can always be discussion about, you know, when something becomes true advocating. And in which form you can do it. Again, as a sitting member of city council, my take as the attorney is, uh, viewpoint should remain neutral. But again, in your own personal lives, acting outside of city council, uh, members, again, you're free to, uh, discuss and have those conversations as you please.
But often you'll have citizens groups that will organize and they can certainly advocate.
Very much so. And so.
Yeah. Do we have that in place? That's, that's my concern.
Wouldn't be us that would have it in place. I, from what I have gathered, because I've answered a couple, uh, general questions uh, from one of the contractors where they had been, uh, somebody who had, who wants, I think is going to make a donation and wanted, uh, to be involved with that. Um, so I was made aware that there are individuals acting again outside of, uh, the city who have organized, I think there's two chair people, uh, on that. And they were directed, um, to that organization. And I think again, that's kind of in the early stages, but I know that there have, uh, there are multiple individuals. And, and, and oftentimes we'll see, uh, groups, municipalities will see groups on both sides where you have those who advocate for and those who advocate, uh, against. And again, uh, they are not, uh, uh, open to the, or they are not subject to the same regulations. They can kind of do and say what they want within the bounds of.
Okay. My only concern is that we've got it. We really should get something sooner, the sooner the better and, and the more the better. Uh, education.
Yeah, it's, it, it's not coming from us. Again, it's, it's, we have, we're educating. I think the website, um, the um, estimator for, uh, what it'll cost property owners. I think it's very well done and, and gives good information. Um, again, every single thing that we've put, um, there's just specific laws. And so for instance, anything that we put in writing on social media, um, on mailers, we have to put certain disclosures and by statute, we have to do it. And, and again, we take those things seriously. Uh, and, uh, apart from myself, uh, we have, um, others who are looking at it as well to make sure that, uh, you know, we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's on that. Again, any avocation, um, for it, uh, it's not directly from the city at all. I mean, it's, it's community members uh, who again are, are meeting outside of this building, uh, to make those things happen. But again, I've heard that just because we've, when people call say, hey, we want to do some of these things, we direct them toward, uh, those other individuals, uh, and not the city organization.
One question on that.
Sure.
So when you said, um, we can advocate for or against it in our personal capacity, would that mean anytime we're not at city hall, we can give our opinion?
Acting on behalf or acting on behalf or, or utilizing, uh, city resources.
Okay.
And so again, we've had that discussion, uh, the bond attorney, she'll push it a little bit more than I will and say that, you know, if you're out on the street and doing those things, again, I look at it from, uh, you know, from inside the walls of this building in, in city council. Um, and again, she, she's done this longer than I have and she'd be yelling at me right now because she disagrees that even there was an issue in Bonneville County and in Idaho Falls with their school district. Um, the way I look at it is why invite the challenge when, um, you know, let's be more conservative in what we're doing. Uh, we have, uh, I know that with our community, uh, there are strong opinions for this. And so um, I'm just going to keep talking. So Eric has to sit there and get that out. Well, that's with that all.
I don't think it's coming back.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, there's nothing else. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Colin.
Yep. Have a good evening.